Good evening. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing, a Subcommittee Hearing for September 15, 2022 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the openly meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 31, 2023. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting, as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, press star nine to raise and lower your hand, star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Just to take a quick roll call, Mr. Fortune?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Olick?
Yes.
Excellent. Mr. Fortune, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, we can't see your beautiful face on the screen, but we let you hear your voice.
Okay, excellent.
I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for the five o'clock hearings if you can give me the address if you are going to defer or withdraw. There are none, I'll call the first case, calling DOA 1300-890-6 Ruthman Street. This is a rear porch extension, expansion to include new footings, new column support by four-by-six, pressure-treated, all structure, new five-quarter decking, and new handrails. Violation to Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 21, 2029, side yard is insufficient, and Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is anyone on for 6 Ruthman Street?
I am, Ali Cato Vazquez, 6 Ruthman Street, 02121.
So please tell us what you're proposing to do. Is this a one-family or a two-family, and is it owner occupied?
I'm the owner, and it's a two-family home. It's a two-family home.
Okay, and you live in the building?
Yes, I live on the second floor.
Okay, so tell us about these decks that you're proposing. How are you proposing to expand them?
Just, it's just the second floor that I wanted to spend a little bit. It's just not too much, it's just a little bit that I want to do.
Okay.
I...
Okay. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Plans are straightforward, very simple.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant met with the Butters and also met with Mike Ozu from Project Right, and everything is checked out, no opposition, and at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Madam Chair, I have no... May I have a motion, please?
I'm making motion to approve. The BPDA asked for a design review, I'm not sure if it's really necessary, but...
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Itoom and supports, a motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Madam Chair, I want to take a roll voice.
Thanks for the reminder. Fortune?
Yes.
Olick?
Hi.
Arajo also in support, some motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 134-1439, 34 Halsey Road. This is a builder's second-floor addition to the rear of the house and new kitchen. Violation to Article 69, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is there anybody on for Halsey Road?
If you're on for that address, can you raise your hand or send a message in the chat?
We can go to the next one, Jessica.
Okay.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 134-451424, Fairview Street. This is a curb cut to access the existing paved driveway. Violation to Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area, any residential district shall, and in any accessory used, occupy any part of the front or side yards required by this code, except that such a side yard may be used for off-street parking located more than five feet from the side lot line. And in no other district shall any accessory used other than the off-street parking occupy any part of the front or side yards required by this code. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Matthew Fecto at 24 Fairview Street.
So, Mr. Fecto, can you describe to us what you're planning on doing?
Sure, so there is a existing paved driveway on the side of our house, and a curb cut was never done, and the driveway was paved prior to our ownership, starting in 2019. And so we'd just be looking for a curb cut in order to be able to access the parking on the side of the house.
Okay, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The plans are straightforward, there is a driveway on the side of the house. To the applicant, do you already use it to drive over the curb?
We don't, we try to keep on the right side of things.
Well, good for you. There is room to get two cars tandem without front yard parking, so a curb cut would be helpful.
Madam Chair, I don't know if Mr. D'Amico is on, but he did speak on this. Jessica, is Mr. D'Amico on?
Yes, I am.
You are, oh, sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I have more opposition to this, I would just like to see the curb cut align better with the proposed parking locations in a northerly direction, because right now it doesn't align as well as it should, because it would involve a turn to get to the actual parking location. So I'd like to see the curb cut move to align it better, so there'll be no turning to gain access to the parking.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, our office held in a Butters meeting on July 25th. Noah Butters attended, and subsequently none reached out to our office to express any concerns. We understand that the applicant also reached out to the closest neighborhood association, Lana. At this time, we defer to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Let me just ask the applicant a question. Mr. D'Amico is right, there's a little offset from the curb cut to the driveway. Is there a reason for that? Is there something in the way, or why is that?
So, the surveyor suggested that we move the curb cut slightly off of the property line, and right now, the driveway, the paved driveway sort of goes straight along the side of the house, but there's a little grass, maybe a two- or three-foot wide grassy area that would better align with the 10-foot curb cut that's being proposed. So that grassy area, we would expand the driveway there and then, you know, be able to access it that way.
But there's no, so there's no street tree or anything else stopping?
Madam Chair, what he's saying makes sense, so this is, the curb cut is centered on the expanded driveway, and they'll just have to pull over a little to the right to get to the house. It's fine the way it is.
Okay, so, may I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, motion for approval carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 134-4569, 145 Eustace Street. This is a confirmed, architec, single-family dwelling, construct a new deck, 18 by 19, in the rear over the first-floor kitchen. Violation to Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Anybody on from Eustace Street?
I am, I'm not sure if I'm...
You can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record and tell us, first of all, if it's a one- or a two-family dwelling, if it's owner occupied, and then what you're planning on doing.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Anthony Balls, I'm one of the contractors working on the, at this property. You need my address as well?
Yep.
Okay, my address is 1709 Dorchester Avenue, Dorchester 02124.
Okay. So I can tell it, so it is a single-family, is it owner occupied?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so tell us about the deck, the deck is over the first-floor kitchen?
Yes, the first-floor kitchen is, I'm not sure if you can see my thing moving, but...
Okay, so hold on, hold on a second, okay? Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
All you've got is the plot plan that you see there, there's no elevation showing the railings or anything, but, I mean, this is really simple, so I guess it's, I would have preferred an elevation, but it's adequate.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the Butters on July 28th, in which we did not have attendance, so there's no support or opposition in this project. At this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no...
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, some motion carries, motion for approval carries, so good luck, sir.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 134-5274, 11 Tappan Street. This is a partial change of use to create flexible family space in existing garage barn by removing two and three parking spaces. One parking space will remain. Violation to Article 67, Section 33, application of a dimensional requirement. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Von Worthington, 110A, Inman Street, Cambridge, Mass. I'm here on behalf of my clients, Joe and Chessel Rove, who are also on the call. This is an existing structure, existing barn that...
So, hold on, tell us if this is, so this is a one-family dwelling, is it?
This is a barn and garage that's behind a single-family dwelling, that's correct.
So it is a single-family dwelling, okay? And so, so yeah, tell us about what the proposed reuse of the garage barn is supposed to be.
Sure, so right now, there's three parking spaces, we're proposing to keep one inside the barn, there's still parking outside of the barn. Inside the barn, this is a flexible family space, there'll be, there'll be home office space, a home gym space, and a bathroom, as well as a first-floor open area. The idea here is just to give more space for their kids and family to live. We're also removing the single-story portion of barn shown on the survey where on the left, and actually making the barn more conforming with that side yard setback. I think...
So let me just, let me just ask you, so if you, so it's a home office, a gym, and just general flexible space, so you are extending water and heating into that barn?
Yeah, there's going to be a heat pump for heating and cooling, and we're proposing to connect to the sewer in the existing house, we of course have to go through approvals for that as well.
And, so this is entirely proposed for flexible space and not for occupancy in any way, shape, or form?
That's correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The characterization is accurate, this is not a separate unit, a separate domicile, this is an expanded space, the plans are okay.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, our office held in a Butters meeting on August 3rd, where several of Butters were in attendance. After that meeting, our office received six letters of support for the project, and the applicant reached out to the local civic association, Lana. With that, we defer to the board.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have those letters of support the Mayor's Office spoke of.
Thank you. Mr. Olick, a question, will any of those parking spaces that will be removed from the garage be in the parking in the front yard?
Well, can't really tell from, no, no. They'll be in the rear of the house in front of the barn.
Okay, Ms. Ambassador, is that everybody?
Yeah, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second that motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so the motion for approval carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 134-9903, 144 Elmer Road. This is the closing of porch in the back of the house, install new footing, install new stairs, install eight windows, install a new siding, install new sheet rock. Violation to Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is there anybody on for Elmer Road? I will come back to that one. Calling the next case, calling DOA 135-0180-108, Laurie Avenue. This is adding a driveway in front of the house, two parking spots. Violation to Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area of accessory use. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, address, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. With me today is the owner, John McManus. This is a proposal for, this is a proposal to add off-street parking as an accessory used to an existing single-family home that is owner occupied. As you can see here, we've been cited for limitation of the area. This is in line with what is existing in the neighborhood for others, even...
So, 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 Council, let me just ask you, is this front yard parking, or is it in the side yard?
So this is going to be in the side yard, but you'll see that there is a driveway to access on the front yard, right in line even more so towards the abutting property on the right-hand side, they do have an off-street parking spot that is in the front yard of their property.
Okay, how are the plans? Let me just ask, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The plans are straightforward, it's a 10-foot curb cut, it goes, the driveway goes to the front edge of the house, and then you've got two tandem spots from the front edge toward the back. It's a nine-foot-six, you know, it'd be better if it were 10-foot, but it works.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. For the community process, the applicant met with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council and a Butters on Tuesday, July 26, 2022, where the zoning council voted 7-0 in support. We also received one letter of support from a Butters at 130 Laurie Ave. Our office has also not received any letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer judgment to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have a few letters of support, but we also have one letter of opposition from the next-door neighbor saying they're infringing on their property line.
All right, Bob D'Amico?
I think Mr. D'Amico is, yeah, look...
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD, and I was just wondering to be redundant, if the curb cut could be more in line with the parking areas, because it's pretty tight there, and to make a turn into those parking spaces might be a little difficult. And my second point is, can the parking spaces be pushed further in the rear of the property? Thank you.
Madam Chair, speaking in opposition.
Hold on a second, yes, please put your name and address on the record.
490 Textile Avenue, Lincoln Institute.
Okay, so tell us what your opposition is based on.
Madam Chair, I did send in a letter of opposition that was placed in the file, I'm representing Jeff and Mary Borenstein, the director Butters at 112 Laurie Avenue. The proposed driveway on the plan would encroach on the five-foot buffer required by Section 10, 10-1 of the zoning code, and we have three issues. One is that the parking spaces appear to directly touch the lot line between the properties in some instances, and certainly will be well within the five-foot buffer. If the Borsteins were to put a fence along their property line, it appears that the parked cars could not open their doors, it's much too close to their property. In addition, the applicant states in his application, I don't have any off-street parking. In fact, the applicant has a right-of-way in the back of his property, which crosses over a portion of my client's property, and he uses the right-of-way to drive to the back of his property. We have spoke with applicant and his counsel, they're not willing to give up that right-of-way access if you were granted a variance for driveway purposes and parking. And most importantly, I don't believe the applicant has met the statutory requirements for variance, there's no certain...
Okay, okay, so, okay, so there is a real right-of-way that's being used by the applicant for parking currently?
Madam Chair, can I interject and respond to...
No, 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 I want to hear from the Butter.
Yes, there is, in fact, I believe it's shown on the plan, the right-of-way towards the back of the property.
Okay, Mr. Olick, hold on, I just need to find out, is there anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, Mr. Olick, what do the plans show?
Well, they do show a right-of-way in the back, I don't know, I mean, we can ask the applicant to explain how that's used for parking currently, or if it is. Again, this is tight, if it were 10 feet wide, it would be better. Mr. D'Amico is also suggesting, asking if it can be, spaces can be moved back a little further, which would certainly help, but I guess I would like to know from the applicant, what's the possibility of using the right-of-way for parking and accessing the rear of the property?
Great.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so there is a passageway in the rear of the property that seems to be under dispute between the neighbors, for the actual deeded passage, 10-foot passageway seems to be obstructed from the neighbors, so there was some sort of old handshake deal that allows some other passageway in the property, but I'm not even quite sure the intent and the scope, because again, that's not recorded. But also, just to address Attorney Clermont's statements regarding the actual five-foot buffer, in fact, this is an accessory use, so there's no requirements specifically, because parking is not required in this area to provide that buffer, or even the 10-foot wide passageway as well, so again...
So we just, we want to make sure that, okay, I don't know, what do you think, Mr. Olick, Mr. Fortune, is this ready for action, or should there be further conversations? Would this benefit from a deferral?
Madam Chair.
I think we should move forward, I mean, I think this is similar to many other cases that have come before us, it's not ideal, and it sounds like there's some disputes between the neighbors, which I don't think we need to get involved, we should just make a judgment based on whether it's satisfactory from the perspective of the usual criteria we use.
Madam Chair, Secretary, I would agree with, I would agree with Mr. Olick, but I have a quick question, obviously, I live in West Roxbury, I know Laurie Ave pretty well, I'm just, I'm looking on Google Maps, how are they getting a vehicle in the back of the house? There's no driveway to get in the back, and I see a vehicle parked on the backside. Mr. Spitz, could you maybe explain that?
So again, I'm not quite sure with the access or passageway and the intent of it, I do have the homeowner here present, he could probably answer that personally himself, if you prefer.
I'm just a little confused, looking at the next-door neighbors, they have their parking driveway, but there's no other driveway to get a vehicle unless they're using something on the backside of Morel Street, I would imagine.
Yeah, I think there's a cutoff on the other street that they have rights, there's, I believe there's three or four properties that have right to the 10-foot passageway, and again, that's, you know, there's a legal, I think that's a legal dispute, because I think the actual passageway that's been deeded out has been obstructed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay...
Madam Chair, if I could conclude my opposition?
Is this, is this a new person, or is this the council?
This Attorney Clermont, I'd just like to conclude my opposition with one of the points, one that was raised, this is an accessory use, not within the, not required to be buffered, but Section 10.1 appears to me to say a side yard can be used for off-street parking located more than five feet from the sideline, which this is not, so they would need a variance for that.
Counselor, thank you, hold on. Ms. Ambassador, can you please make sure that everybody's muted but for the board? So, Mr. Olick, Mr. Fortune, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm preparing.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
I'm going to second that motion.
Okay, Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, some motion carries for approval. I just want to make a comment, because we often see these little spots that come to this board, that in fact, if there's something you guys can walk out, so that you're, you know, everybody's comfortable, please do so, because we've seen these before, where actually, good conversations have occurred subsequent to our decisions, and everybody ends up happy, so we urge you to continue that conversation between the two of you.
Great, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 135-2719, 168 Sycamore Street. This is installing a shed dormer to create more living space on the third floor, removing a load-bearing wall to open up the first floor and frame new walls. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine. The building has excessive stories. Name and address for the record, please.
You should be on, um.
Sorry, guys, I'm doing myself. Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Andy Juska. What we're trying to achieve is pretty much create another bedroom on the third floor. Um, my family has.
So, let me just, so, 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 hold on a second. Is this a one-family or a two-family?
No, it is a one-family, and it's to remain a one-family. Um, it's just, you know, my family grew a little bit. I have a boy and a girl. They both need bedrooms, and I'm trying to make everybody and, and add a bedroom.
Okay. Okay, and so what's the floor to see, as you are adding a dormer? How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Plans are straightforward.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment from the board. Uh, we have not heard any concerns from neighbors or residents at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have one letter of support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, uh, I'll suggest BPDA design review, because it's a change to the exterior.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, and it's an additional story in essence. Uh, Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo is also in support. So the motion for approval with design review has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one-three-five-three-five-seven-six thirty-three Augustus Avenue. This is to legalize the existing living space in the basement, install a bathroom and flooring. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine. The floor area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Kyle Smith, counsel for the owner. Nearly home and departing kids from the car. If we could defer for a hearing.
Um, so, 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 honestly, I can't hear you.
May, may we defer, uh, for a hearing or two?
Oh, okay, you're, you're requesting for a deferral, okay. May I have a motion for defer?
May, may we pause, can we present at the end of this hearing?
Oh, okay, you want to wait until you have a calm baby at the end of the hearing? Okay. We get it. Okay, let's move to the next case.
Then they had done that. Calling the next case, calling DOA one-three-six-zero-seven-zero-one-fifty-three Cedar Grove Street. This is demo an existing deck and adding new addition to an existing single-family home and relocating the existing bulkhead. The violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient side yard setback on the right side. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient usable open space. And Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
James Walsh, uh, fifty-three Cedar Grove.
Are you the owner of the building?
I am. It's a single-family, uh, this is a single-story addition, uh, to create space for, uh, my family that has just expanded.
Okay, and so the, so you just, and uh, so the new, what's the size of the new addition?
It's approximately eleven feet, four inches by nineteen feet, seven inches.
Okay, uh, how were the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, the plans are pretty straightforward. It's, it's, uh, removing an existing deck and, and putting addition in its place. The addition is slightly larger footprint than the, uh, than the deck was, but, um, uh, you know, it's, it's relatively.
Okay, and, um, so let's see, it says that, um, the projected, proposed projection of the addition is within eight feet of a nearby accessory structure? Is that accessory structure on this property, or is it on somebody else's property?
It's a garage.
It's a garage, okay, okay. Um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office conducted the Butters meeting on July nineteenth. No concerns were raised at that time, and we've not heard any complaints from neighbors. Uh, without, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Um, Mr. Olick, have you seen the BPDA's recommendation?
Um, let's, let's see.
It's, it's recommending appro, go ahead.
No building code relief.
Yeah. Must have to do with that, um, with that eight feet. Um.
I'm with the architect. We actually did revise the plan to bring the, the addition, uh, A four-one off of the, the rear garage, that, that violation is no more.
Who is, oh, what, what, can you put your name and address on the record?
Uh, Gavin Driscoll, one-eighty Allen Street, Brantory House.
Could you repeat what the violation was?
That we were, we were about five feet away from the existing garage, but, um, we did pull that back to meet the eight feet. So we're at A four-one, the building code violation.
Right, no, 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 that, that would, that would be a violation.
And does, yeah, does Mr. Olick, and Mr. Olick has the most updated plans?
Uh, yes, we did send those in.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
And I don't think there's a need for the building code relief provision.
Yep, it's, it responded to that. Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo is also in support, some motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one-three-six-one-zero-seven-six eighty-one Tindale Street. Let's construct new shed dormers on both sides of the existing gabled roof. Finish the attic space and create two new bedrooms and bathrooms. Violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine. The lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ivan Hernandez, uh, one-eleven Baker Street, West Roxbury. I'm speaking on behalf of the homeowners who are also with us here this evening. Um, the, uh, we're proposing, uh, as you said earlier.
I'm sorry, let me just ask you, let me just ask you, is this a one or a two-family?
It's a one-family.
Okay, so go ahead, tell us, uh, what's being proposed?
Uh, we're proposing, uh, shed dormers on both sides of the, um, uh, third floor level, uh, to create two bedrooms and a bathroom as shown there on the plans. Right now, the, there are two rooms up there. It is a finished attic, uh, or finished third, uh, level. Um, and again, as, as the plans show, we, uh, would be creating, uh, more comfortable space by, uh, creating a shed dormer on either side of the existing roof. Uh, we're keeping the existing ridge height. We're not increasing the height of the building. We're maintaining the current height.
Okay, I'm looking at this on Google Maps, so you have not enclosed the rear deck. Do you have rear decks?
Uh, there is a, a rear deck, but yeah, no, there, there's no, not, nothing's been touched on the lower levels. The front porch remains this, and the back, the same.
Okay, how were the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, just as the applicant described, straightforward shed dormers on either side. It doesn't, uh, the, the height of the building has not changed.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an Butters meeting on June sixth. Uh, one director Butter was in attendance. No concerns were expressed to our office. We're unaware of any other concerns. Without, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review to make sure that the dormers, um, uh, you know, work with the overall design of the building.
I'm going to second that motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo is also in support, some motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling, calling a next case, calling DOA one-three-six-four-six-seven-one-seven-to-nine Brooksdale Road. This is to add two shed dormers on the third floor. Violation is Article fifty-one, section nine. The floor area ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-one, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the side yard is sufficient. And Article fifty-one, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Patricia Boyle McKenna, Matt McKenna, from seven and nine Brooksdale Road.
Um, so is this a one or a two-family, and is it owner-occupied?
Yes, it's a two-family dwelling, and we are owner-occupied.
Okay, um, and this is, is this Alston or Brighton?
Brighton, oh-two-one-three-five.
Okay, uh, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
Sure, we'd, um, we'd like to add two shed dormers, um, to the attic level, uh, to increase space, uh, for our three little girls. We're going to put their bedrooms up there. Um, remain owner-occupied.
Okay, and, um, the garage next to you, is that yours?
Um, the garage?
Next to us is not ours.
No.
No, okay, 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 uh, so let's see, add two, and this is a single-family owner-occupied.
Two-family.
I'm sorry, two, I'm sorry, it's a two-family, okay? Um, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, very similar to the last, uh, last proposal, just two shed dormers on either side. Uh, don't affect the height, uh, they're fine.
Okay, um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Vendoza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services here. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Um, the applicant did notify Butters, and we haven't heard, uh, any community opposition. Uh, our office is unaware of any concerns at this time, and, uh, again, at this time, like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Um, Mr. Olick, um, Mr. Olick, go ahead.
Pardon me?
Um, is there a motion?
Oh, a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo is also in support, so the motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case for re-discussion, calling DOA one-two-six-five-one-five-two, ten Carson Street. This is asphalt paved driveway which can park three vehicles. Paved driveway is in front of the house. It can let the outside car move easier. This paved driveway is not for parking purposes. The violation is Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking and loading. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the side, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi.
Name and address for the record.
Please put, yeah, put, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so my parents, they own this house, and then it's a single-family, and it's owner-occupied.
So tell us what they're proposing to do.
So, um, actually, this is the old plot plan. I sent a new plot plan, uh, through email to ISD, uh, Board of Appeal, um, before, but nobody, nobody responded to my email, because the initial hearing, um, date is last month.
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken this. I don't know if you want to hear his comments.
Um, I, I'd like, I just, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm looking.
Why, why is this a re-discussion?
Because, um, Madam Chair said, um, the system needs, needs, like, needs the new plot plan. So this is the old one, and the description of the work is also the old one. So I sent all the new stuff through email to ISD DOA, um, through email on September second, and, um, I didn't receive any response, so I, I cannot change anything on the ISD portal, too.
Okay, so, um, let's, let's.
Original one, but, uh, I've got, but I was sent the same plan as what's on the screen, so I have not seen the new plan.
Okay, um, because this, I'm looking at, um, this on Google Map, on Google, and it looks like it was, it has all appearances of a one-family, but there is a fence that goes down the middle of the property?
Uh, that one is, was removed already.
So the, the fence has been removed, okay, um, Mr. Olick, uh, what do you think? Do we need to defer it one more time until we have the appropriate plans?
Yeah, I can't quite understand what they're proposing, uh, based on this plan. It doesn't make a lot of sense. Uh, it just, they're proposing just paving of a triangle as if the driveway is already there. On Google Maps, there's no driveway there.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, um, Counselor has told me there is no email, so we need to either try to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm looking at Google Maps, um, Mr. Olick, and it looks like there is a pretty wide, um, a, a, a pretty wide asphalt area. Okay, so there's a motion, may, I may have a motion for deferral.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Uh, Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo is also in, in support. Uh, may I have a date, please?
Madam Chair, we can do the next subcommittee, which is October thirteenth.
Okay, and this is a note to the applicant. Please make sure that you, um, talk to the staff to get that revised site plan in. And also, when you are here at the subcommittee the next time, be, I hope that you will be able to describe to us what is being proposed, so we can clearly understand it to make a decision, okay?
Uh, I went to MSF, um, like, two weeks ago.
So, 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 so.
And then they gave me the email.
Hold on, ho, hold on, so, uh, make sure that, uh, you stay on the line. Will somebody please help her, um, you know, while she's here, so that we can just bring closure to it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we'll see you at ten on October thirteenth at, uh, five o'clock.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Tom. I think it's not paper and staff. She did bring the plan, or send the plan in, just that, uh.
I'm sorry, miss, miss, Mr. Bloom, um, let's, you know, deal with it later. Let's just go back to Halsey Road if we can, Mr. Fortune.
Yep, sure, Madam Chair. Calling, calling a couple of cases. I called early, case DOA one-three-four-one-four-three-nine thirty-four Halsey Road. Is Halsey Road on? All right, Madam Chair, it's now five-fifty-eight. Want to make a motion for denial without prejudice?
I'll second that.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo also in support, so the motion carries.
Going to go to the next case, calling DOA one-three-four-nine-nine-zero-three-one-forty-four Elmer Road. Is Elmer Road on? Madam Chair, it's now five-fifty-nine. I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Which was the one with the crying baby?
It's the next one, Mr. Olick.
Oh, okay, all right. I'll second your motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo also in support, some motion carries.
All right, let's see if we have a baby that's quieted down. Calling a next case, calling DOA one-three-five-three-five-seven-six thirty-three Augustus Avenue. This is to legalize the existing living space in the basement, install bathroom and flooring. Yeah, violation was Article sixty-seven, section nine. The floor area ratio was excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, this is Kyle Smith with a business address of three-five-nine Newbury Street in Boston Back Bay. Uh, counsel for the owner, Miguel Williams, who's on the line as well, being an owner occupant, and the also project architect is on the call as well.
So, um, the, the sense from, um, the BPDA is that this building was recently constructed?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, there was a pre-existing structure that was raised in the favor of a subdivision into two parcels, of which there are two ground-up new construction, single-family homes. This being one of the two.
Okay, and tell us what the, um, applicant anticipates using that basement space for?
Um, so currently, it's just rough, raw space. The intent is to install the bath, as noted, and just make it essentially finished, open, uh, spillover area for the family. So it's not divided. It is open, uh, for, you know, general household use.
Okay, and what's the, um, the square footage of, I'm just trying to get a sense of, um, the square footage of this space and the square footage of the entire, uh, thirty-three Augustus. And the square footage of the entire, uh, thirty three Augustus.
Got it, so Madam Chair, the, the rough open area is noted on, uh, the floor plans, uh, is eight hundred and thirty nine square feet. Uh, we have about thirty nine square feet for the, uh, bathroom. Uh, and then the aggregate current square footage for, uh, the, uh, second, third and fourth floors, I'm sorry. Uh, second and third floors are about twenty seven hundred square feet in total. So the aggregate area, including the, uh, to be renovated, uh, finished basement, would be shy of four thousand three hundred and ninety, sorry, three thousand nine hundred and ninety five square feet.
And, um, this is a three bedroom?
Uh, Miguel, if you could confirm, but I believe so, yes, Madam Chair.
It's a three bedroom, okay, I mean, this is helpful to us, because we have three bedrooms coming in at a thousand square feet. Or just above a thousand square feet, go ahead.
Man, technically, it's a four bedroom, but it, it, um, the, the fourth area is really open loft space.
Okay, got it. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, I'm a little confused, um, if it's an open room and, uh, just a bathroom and a laundry room, what, why does it need legalization?
Oh, our, our current aggregate square footage for FAR purposes is approximately at about point five. Um, with the additional added square footage, we do exceed then the FAR. Um, which puts that approximately about point six and a point five allowable sub district.
So the, so the issue is the FAR?
Uh, solely, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But, cause you're not proposing any change in, uh, in this space, wh, um, which is a good thing. Because according to the drawings, um, it's, you know, four, almost four and a half feet below grade, so it's a, it's a kind of an underground space. And, uh, we would not look kindly on, uh, living space being there. So it's just gonna remain an open room, laundry room, bathroom, and you're just looking to get, uh, variance on the. FAR for the, for the whole structure.
Correct, yes.
Why, why does the BPDA recommendations say no building code relief?
Uh, I am uncertain, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know, what, what's the floor to ceiling height in there?
Uh, it is proposed to be seven feet, uh, eight and a half inches tall.
Yeah, that's what the drawings, but that's, that's certainly fine, so you don't know, you don't know. We don't, we don't know why the BPDA, uh, issued that.
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Next, um, is there a motion in the making?
So, I, I just want to introduce, I may, I think there was one point at which they, they felt this is actually going to be.
No, hold on, hold on, sir, hold on, um, may I have a motion?
What was?
I'm sorry?
Did we get testimony?
Oh, I'm, um, I don't know, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held a Butters meeting on June fifteenth, uh, there were no, no serious concerns expressed at that meeting. Um, we've not received any letters of opposition. With that, we defer to the board, thank you.
I do have a raised hand. Kyle, are you looking to give testimony here? Okay, if not, have a.
Uh, no, sorry, that, that was myself, I was trying to log.
All right, I have no raised hands, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Araljo is also in support, so you're, you've been approved, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The meeting is now adjourned, thank you.